Mr. Naum, can you lead us to the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you. Done? Yes, sir. Let's just gather.
Just briefly, Sergeant at the Arms, I'd just like to remind the public that during the town council meetings, we'll have no outbursts or language, please. We like to hold meetings in a simple order. If there is an outburst, we'll just remind you, and then if there's continued outbursts, we'll ask you to leave. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, public comment. Walter?
Oh, I hear your fair name. Irene, our friend.
It's Rinaldo.
Oh, sure. That was easy.
It's Sforbino, but listen, Irene is coming. For you, you can call me Irene.
Is that, by the way, is that a marijuana?
Oh, jeez. No, no.
Walter.
It's not, but thank you for that.
By their hunch, I mean.
You don't know me that well. I'm actually a very straight arrow.
I mean, good.
And the police are here. What are you thinking?
Oh, geez. Oh, man, she's like, yes, you.
Anyway, clock's ticking, so I'm gonna start talking. I was watching the town council meeting from home last week. I'd just gotten home after vacation. I was tired, and I was interested in hearing what the mayor's rebuttal to the state police and FBI investigation, mentioned in the Waterbury Republican, as it's only fair to hear both sides. You only hear one side from the news, and I wanted to hear what he had to say. While the mayor may be completely innocent of all the charges, most people's conduct does not warrant such an investigation. A full explanation would have been appropriate. The people of New Milford have the right to know if their tax dollars are being spent honestly and in their interest. You've been entrusted by these people to oversee what's going on in this town. These allegations should be addressed in a serious manner, not dismissed with a nonsensical fake news quip. Now, you might think I'm being mean, but I'm doing you a favor by saying this, because you represent the whole town, and I appreciate what you have to say. So, that's the only reason I'm saying that. That's actually not why I'm here. As I was sitting in my kitchen with a cup of tea, because it was a cold day, I was surprised to see Gary Heda speak during the public comments section. Now, I'm not a stickler for decorum, and anyone who knows me knows that formality is not my reason for living, but there's a reason that certain rules are to be followed to promote civility and fairness. While what transpired did not rise to the level of someone threatening our mayor with a baseball bat, I thought it was uncalled for and unprofessional. Gary Heda stood up to summarize the findings of the Bike and Trail Committee, of which I'm a member. Heda made recommendations on behalf of the Bike and Trails Committee without input from the group. His wife's outburst was not only unnecessary but ill-informed. As I understand, and I might be wrong, because I'm not a stickler for the rules, normally the chair would receive an email asking if they are available to present at a specific town council meeting. The chair did not. Tom and Lisa Arison have both been acting as chair at the meetings. Neither one of them got a notice to present at a town meeting. Now, I joined the Bike and Trail Committee because it seemed like a positive, nonpartisan way to, you know, warm and fuzzy, help improve the town. Sure, there are issues with the cost, and that's completely understandable, but to politicize this committee is just abhorrent and a disservice to everyone, especially Lisa Arison, who's put her heart and soul into this. Tom O'Brien and Seamus, a registered Republican, they've put years, putting this, a lot of effort into making this town a better place. I'm not speaking for them. I'm not here as a Democrat. I'm not here as a blood donor, or a Lutheran, or a fan of cricket. I'm just here as a member of the Bike and Trails Committee. And I was flagrante. And in terms of Ms. Heda, maybe she's forgotten the process, since she's been absent for 60 percent of the town council meetings this year. But her using this as a reason to attack the ex-chair and the current chair, who's a lovely woman I respect so much, Lisa Arison, she's a good reason that I went to most of these meetings, because she's just delightful. I mean, it's just inappropriate and disrespectful. So, that's...how much time do I have?
Believe it or not, you still have two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay. I'm just gonna throw out something. I know the economic development person might be here, or will you talk to her occasionally? I don't know who she is. I know a lot of people doing recycling, and they're also, I also know a lot of people doing reconstruction, and there's no gypsum recycling plant anywhere in this close in New York or in Connecticut. I know Deep had been looking into this at some point. Now, gypsum's a pretty stable thing. There might be issues with dust and trucks, but, you know, I just thought that perhaps for the brownfield. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not an expert on what it entails, but it might be something, a nice way to sort of give back to the world and the earth.
Thank you.
Sure.
Irene, thank you very much.
Sure.
Mary Jane, please.
Mary Jane Lundgren, 89, Shuniski Road. I'm here tonight to ask you, Mr. Bass, for transparency. It appears to be totally lacking with the Rose Report, with the Ash Report, and I think it's time that the citizens of New Milford got the story. Whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, we deserve the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Jeff Winter, please.
Hi. Good evening. Jeff Winter, 22 Mori Road. Transparency, but also oversight are really at question here over some of the very basic functions of the town, not the least of which is, of course, our roads. There is waste that is being dumped from our roads in a backyard up on Great Brook Road. It is also being dumped in our neighboring town of Bridgewater by our contract, one of our contractors, Grosso Construction. As far as I know, the site on Great Brook Road is certainly not an approved solid waste disposal area. In fact, last week at the Roads Committee, I was told in no uncertain terms by two of the members of Department of Public Works that they actually told Grosso to cease and desist, which is great, except what followed was, "What's your plan? What are you gonna do about it now?" There is no, they were dead, it was crickets, because, "Well, we dumped it. What do we care now?" And Mr. Mayor, you get an update every Monday on the roads. You know what's going on. Do you not care about waste being dumped? All you gotta do is walk behind the ambulance barn, folks. Take a look. There's enough old asphalt dirt and pipes sticking out of giant mounds of stuff from whether it be Long Mountain Road or Squire Road. It's been there for 10 months to a year. Why is that? Why are we holding waste, as I was clearly told by DPW employees, that this is waste from the contractor, that we're doing them a favor? Who's gonna end up paying that bill? And why are we, why is this behind our ambulance barn? All this waste, and you know about it, yet you allow it to stay there, which is, of course, right next to a brownfield. So, are we trying to make the situation worse? And it's time to release the Rose Report. It's also time to release the state police report and the FBI report that regarded you and Lieutenant Ash. And the Personnel Director told me that he would have that ready as soon as he counted up the number of pages. It's been roughly a week now. I'm still waiting. Can't be that long. So, we're still waiting. Now, the Rose Report, we know, has been viewed by a number of people within Town Hall, people who claimed they didn't even see it last week, but now they've seen it. But do we know when they saw it? Do we know when it was delivered to the town? I was told in very nice terms today by the town attorney that that needs to be brought out by a different department, and that's fine. But you've known about it, Mr. Mayor. It's time to release it. Transparency, decency, and ethics require it. Because there are people that are actually being sued over hearsay. Hearsay. Is that fair? Lastly, I think we've all, you all, have received what is known as a whistleblower complaint. And it lays out a number of very troubling allegations. Whether those allegations are simply allegations, or if they are true, that needs to be investigated. It needs to be, again, transparent and public. Especially the concern of overtime of officers to set up for a party that you decided to host, Mr. Mayor. Are you using public, you could easily hire a tent company to do that, or other employees, but you're gonna pay them overtime and then stretch the rest of the department? All we need to do is take a look at the hours in the personnel records, which obviously will be FOI-ed and should be released within the next week. But we also know that there have been other times where officers...
Sheriff, I have a few here, four and a half minutes.
Thanks, pal. I'll wrap it up. There are other times when you have used town labor to help people who are friends of yours, and they have not been billed. When are we gonna get answers for these things? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Mayor, we're at the end of the list.
Thank you, Walter. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to move on to Mayor's remarks, starting out with congratulating the Milford Ambulance for 90 years of service. I attended their open house this past Saturday, and 90 years helping our community, totally volunteered. We do have some paid paramedics, but kudos to Donna Hespe and the Milford Ambulance Team. Also, I'd like to thank Daisy Troop, 40037. I had a chance to meet them yesterday, and they were going for their Good Neighbor badge. One of the things they did with their Girl Scout cookies, money that they get to keep, was they donated all those proceeds to the Ronald McDonald House. So, I thought that was just in the spirit of our community and our good nature, and that was wonderful. I'd like to thank band director David Sizdek and the Milford High School Band Color Guard, band parents, all the volunteers for a wonderful home show. I believe it was probably a couple thousand people that were there, a lot of different bands, and New Milford, as they always do, represented well. They couldn't compete because it's their own home show, but they do a wonderful show. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, definitely go out and see it. It's wonderful. Next, I'd like to thank the DAR, Daughters of American Revolution, on Saturday. They started off, they kicked off Constitution Week up on the green, talked about the importance of our Constitution and how that makes all of our lives better by the founding fathers. And we need to keep that in our hearts and need to very carefully secure our Constitution. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about our beautification efforts as we continue on. You can see the garden club and all the other volunteers continue to do the wonderful beautification in our town. Also, Park and Rex and their mowing, also DPW. I think it's very much a joint effort, and you can see it in our downtown and our other areas as well. Also, I'd like to talk a little bit about our roads. This was brought up a little bit today. Was talking about different types of dirt that are coming off some of these roads and different types of millings. For those in the construction field that know a little bit about construction, they know a couple things. One, first, once it is in the contractor's bucket, it's his. It's not the town's. It's his property. Number two, if they make an agreement with a homeowner, per zoning, they have to get a zoning permit, not the town, the homeowner. So, we need to be cognizant of that. Now, the good thing is, in reviewing this from Municipal Roads Committee, one of the things that we are looking to do is put into our contracts when we do, is if they are going to make any kind of commitment or deal to a taxpayer, a resident of the town in New Milford, we will make sure that they comply with zoning. So, we're gonna make sure that happens. So, lessons learned, and we're gonna move forward with that. Talking about the roads themselves, so we're continuing on with Second Hill. For those that have been up there, we've already put on a binding course for most part of the road. We're looking to put on the second portion of the binder, I believe sometime towards the end of this week. On Fordice Road, they begin their reclaiming, and they're looking to pave the binder on September 27th. This is all weather permitting. On Erickson, they're looking to put the top coat on it, that's the final one, on the 27th as well. Also, for those who didn't know, for Cascade, that road now is open. It's been paved and opened, and right now, we're continuing to work on our 2020 road program, roads that will be put in there with our DPW engineers. I'll have more on this as it progresses, and I just can't thank the DPW Roads Committee Contractors for continuing to work on our roads program. Also, there's been some conjecture, as has been brought up tonight, has been brought up in previous meetings concerning different reports. I'd like now to yield some time from my Mayor's comments to ask Town Attorney Randy DiBella to talk about this Rose Report. Attorney DiBella, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the reason that the mayor asked me to do this was because I've been receiving FOI requests from Jeff and Mary Jane, and I was somewhat inhibited to responding to them because of what's known as the issue of my... In September of 2017, Mayor Brombach engaged Michael Rose, an attorney, in order to do an investigation regarding an alleged relationship between a town employee and a town council member, such that the town council member in this profession was being treated favorably, more favorably than anybody else because of this relationship. Mike, Attorney Rose undertook an investigation of this, and included in this investigation was a review of files that this town employee was responsible for and in which this town council member was working, was representing individuals. The independent attorney found that the work in those files, that is, the employee's work, was professional, without favor, and dilishedly done. So, the random files that were reviewed revealed no such favor. The emails were also reviewed. This employee's emails between this employee and that town council member on a professional basis, and found to be nothing but normal. There was nothing that showed a relationship or anything that would say, would illustrate that there was an intent of favor. So, that's what happened when Attorney Rose did the review. During, following that verbal report, again, I wasn't the town attorney at the time. I didn't learn any of this until late December. But Mike, but the report, following the report, another inquiry was made by someone into the Personnel Department stating that there was this relationship alleging, essentially an illicit relationship between this town employee, who, by the way, is an excellent employee and very reputable, and this town council member. At that time, Mike, Attorney Rose suggested to Mr. Grimes that the FBI get involved because of the public integrity of the data. He contacted the Department of Justice Attorney in Charge, Assistant U.S. Attorney in Charge of that, who said, "Well, this looks more like a state issue. Send me a summary." We all know what that means. But in any event, he reported this verbally to Town Attorney Grimes, who told him, called him off. And the reason he called him off, according to Mr. Grimes, is that this order, or this authorization to go to the FBI, was made by Mayor Brombach in December, who, and he wasn't an officer at the time. The other issue that came up is Mike was not, when Mike Rose was engaged, it was not authorized by the town council. None of this, any of this, knew, obviously. What happened is that in mid-January, I got a call from Attorney Rose, knowing that I was a co-town attorney, stating what had transpired. I said, "This needs to be investigated further, obviously. We'll get it to the appropriate authorities, you know, Chief of Police." He said, "Great. I'll prepare a report. I'll send it to you and Matt, and you send it to, get it to the chief." And he did so. He prepared a three-page report on what his findings were, and he bifurcated it as to the initial findings when the files were reviewed, and then the secondary complaint, after those files were reviewed, revealed nothing. What happened is, he sent it both to Attorney Grimes and me, and I received it on January 16, and I think he did as well. I assumed, because I had told Mike we were gonna do this, that Matt sent it to Chief Boyne. I spoke with Boyne 10 days later, and I asked him if he needed anything, because I never got the notes, the supporting investigative notes from Attorney Rose. He said, "What are you talking about?" He hadn't gotten the report. Matt assumed that I sent it, or I assumed he sent it, presumably assumed I sent it. I immediately prepared a letter, sent it to him, and suggested that it needed investigate, further investigation, given the core allegations and the secondary allegation that needed to be investigated, needed to be investigated. Mike Rose said the same thing. Get it to whoever you think, you know, get it to the chief. Maybe my report will assist him in his review. At that point, the chief responded to me, saying that I acknowledged, expressed the upset of not receiving it on the 16th or 17th. I explained that I thought Matt was gonna send it, and presumably, he thought I was gonna send it, and he said he would take care of it and proceed accordingly. So, this report was not suppressed. This report was sent to the highest-ranking law enforcement officer in New Milford. In fact, I never spoke with the mayor about this report. I thought this report needed to be handled in an investigative way, not in an executive way. It wasn't his call. I don't mean to, no disrespect intended. It wasn't the mayor's call, in my professional judgment. That's why I went to Chief Boyne. After I go to Chief Boyne, he has the contact with the appropriate state attorney's office or the Connecticut State Police. They do not deal with civil municipal lawyers unless it's to review the enforcement ordinances and things of that nature. So, I went to Chief Boyne. Presumably, Chief Boyne said he would take it, that he would take it to the state, and of course, I lose any follow-up because it's not my role at that point, nor is it the mayor's role. This is not, this is not a mayor's issue anymore. This was an investigation. The reason the report can't be released is because two of the individuals in that report have threatened litigation because of slander. One clearly claimed that this is a malicious, slanderous allegation for political purposes. And that person's lawyer wrote a letter and stated that any dissemination, further dissemination would be actionable, which is a true statement of the law. But the other thing with that employee is that, under the Freedom of Information Act, there's a provision, and that provision is Section 1-210B, subsection 2. And that says that if there's a personnel matter and it involves the invasion of personal privacy, then it is exempt from disclosure. Now, when I went to the mayor and I got Jeff and Mary Jane's request, I said, "I'll attempt to get away. I'll attempt to get the privilege of way," because it's also a privilege because it came from our attorney, Michael Rose. The mayor was very happy to wait, but we have to notify the individual personnel member. That personnel member said, "Absolutely not. This is a false, absolutely slanderous statement. There's no such involvement." That was shown to Mike Rose, and I will not consent to it. I think it's an invasion, and it's dissemination of slander. That's why it couldn't be released. The second, the second complaintant, who complained to the Personnel Department, which Mike Rose wanted to have further investigated, and which Chief Boyne was going to involve, also stated that that information cannot be made public, because he does not want any further litigation based upon the further dissemination to more people of his statement. So, the fact is, is that the mayor was not withholding anything, and I need to call the spade a spade. If the mayor had told me to withhold that, that would've gone to Chief Boyne. I guarantee you. That's how I practice law. I represent seven towns. So, the fact is, is that I never spoke with the mayor about this report. I never told him what was in it. I never told him what was in it. I never told him that I sent it to Boyne. That's the truth. Now, that's as transparent as I can get right now, but I just wanted to set the record straight, because this is not being withheld because of politics. This is being withheld because of valid, legitimate legal reasons. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Irene. Next, there's also conjecture when people come up to the podium and talk about Captain Ash. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Council, good evening, most importantly, to the community. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to clarify how the investigation into Ash was conducted. I was asked to do it, but I'm more than happy to do it. I want to do it, because I want the truth to be told. The investigation was underway when I became the Chief of Police. I became the Chief in mid-November. The investigation was well underway for six months. So, it was one of my highest priorities to deal with that investigation. I had several major issues to deal with, but this was one of my highest priorities. I had to ensure that, for the integrity of the department, that the investigation was handled thoroughly, completely thoroughly, and by an outside entity. And as I said, that was my objective, make sure there was a thorough, complete, unbiased investigation. And I know there's some questions about how we investigate these things, or how officers are investigated in general. There's usually two avenues. One avenue is a criminal side. The other is an administrative side. So, I had to make sure that both of those sides were covered. The criminal side was being covered by the FBI, and I was very confident in their abilities. The FBI completes very thorough investigations. They leave no stone unturned, and as I said, I'm very comfortable in their handling of that criminal side of the investigation. The investigation continued into December, and in December, the FBI showed up at my office, and they gave me a finding. Their finding was that they cleared the employee and they closed the case. Cleared and closed was the terminology they used. And what they were telling me, and what they told me, is that they found no crimes. Now, remember, the FBI works on the federal level, so I had to ensure now that there were no state issues. We're still dealing with this one aspect, this criminal aspect. The FBI cleared and closed, so I had to present those findings to our Connecticut State's Attorney. And the Connecticut State's Attorney reviewed the case and also determined that there were no crimes. State level cleared, federal level cleared. FBI on the federal level, state's attorneys, decision on the state level. Now, we have this second avenue. We still have to ensure that this case is thoroughly investigated. Remember, I said two avenues, criminal and administrative. The case was investigated by the Connecticut State Police, again, a separate and unbiased organization, and they undertook the administrative investigation. Now, on the administrative side, they're not looking at crimes, because we already looked at that with the FBI and the state's attorney's office. They're looking at policies, rules and regulations, town policies and such. And that's what the state police did. They provided a very thorough report. They reported to me that after their investigation, which concluded in early August of this year, remember, this incident began to be investigated back in June of 2018. So, over a year it took us to work through this process, criminal side, now the administrative side. In their report, they found that they sustained policy violations against the employee, and those policy violations were noted in the report. But at that point, that employee had retired. The employee retired in late June, so my jurisdiction is no longer. Had that employee obviously still been employed by the police department, we would have to take steps to deal with what were called policy violations. So, I stand before you tonight in full transparency. I want to make sure you understand how the investigation was handled. I want you to understand that it was my highest priority to make sure that case was handled properly, thoroughly, and completely. properly, thoroughly, and completely. I'm honored to be here representing the men and women of the New Milford Police Department. Very happy to have my commandant staff here. We have high expectations for our officers and staff. We expect them not only to do things right, but to do the right things. We won't stand for anything other than true transparency, honesty, and integrity. I want the community to know that transparency is also very important to me. If there are reports, if we have reports, and if FOI allows us to release those reports, we're more than willing to be transparent. I want the truth to be told. I always seek the truth. And I always say that we're in it together. And I mean that. It is not us against, it is us with. And we're together, working with the community. We're one. I want to thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Chief.
I hope that my explanation helps. I'm always available. My door is always open. And we look forward to working with you and for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Chief.
And Attorney DeBella?
I forgot to inform you that although the mayor couldn't authorize the release of the report, he does have copies of my transmittal letter to Chief Boyne. And Chief Boyne acknowledged the receipt of the, of the report. Anybody who wants to?
Thank you, Attorney DeBella. Also, continuing on with Mayor comments. Today, I received, as well as the council, received a, a letter or email from David Gronback concerning a letter with a quote-unquote whistleblower status. For those of us that know, you have to be a person to be a whistleblower. Can't be anonymous. But what I did do, as we've done on all of these matters, is I directed the chief to review and explain, uh, what has been entailed on this letter. And we will get that back to you, the Town Council, and the public. Lastly, I'd just like to make a comment. And that's using people's careers, using people's personal issues for political gain is wrong. Absolutely, 1,000% wrong. Using it for political football to damage our community is wrong. It's not what we're about. It's not what this community is about. Community won't tolerate hurting people's lives, bringing back bad memories for town employees. It's not what we're about. It's not what this community is about. It's a wonderful community with volunteers and employees that work hard. And they need to be respected, and their privacy needs to be taken care of. Not using it for political gain. That being said, like to move next?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is kind of an aside, but I, I'd just like to make a comment to make the room a little bit lighter here.
Absolutely.
If you have not gone down to the Water Witch Department to see our new ladder truck, let me tell you, it is well worth the amount of money we spent on this. It's got bells and whistles and safety factors. And, and...
Thank you all.
And, well, and it goes, "Would you like to climb up into the truck?" You got to be kidding me. Oh, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item number four, move to approve the consent agenda, items four, A, B, and C.
So move... Oh, second, I'm sorry.
I know what you meant.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number four, uh, I'm sorry, item number five. This fan gets to me. Uh, I'd like to move that we accept the request from the Board of Education to allow the movement of $352,500 from the Capital Reserve account to fund...
Put it in their Capital Reserve.
Pardon?
Put it in their Capital Reserve.
Oh, they say from. Okay, so move to move it into the Capital Reserve. Must be a typo.
From their surplus.
Yes, from their surplus. Uh, this capital items that were removed from the 2019-2020 Superintendent's Proposed Budget on January 31st of 2019, when the Board approved the 2019-2020 Board of Education Adopted Budget. And if approved, uh, they would like us to then recommend this forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second. I just want to make sure I understand. Um, so this is going to fund a capital purchase that was...
No. So what happens normally in the course of historical business? The, the, the Board of Education had a surplus. And that surplus is requested per item five from the Board of Education concerning putting $352,500 from the Capital Reserve account to fund capital items that were removed. Also requesting $50,000 of that year-end balance goes to turf field replacement. And that's a second motion.
There's another motion.
But normally, that's what we do is we put it into the Capital Reserve.
Well, it does say from.
But it says those funds were removed. They were removed in January?
It does say from. I believe that was just a typographical...
Okay. All right.
So it's, so Katie, it's approved $352,500 to move into?
To move into the Capital.
Plus to Capital.
To the Capital Reserve.
Yeah, it's just, I think they just mixed the two.
That's what confused me.
Wendy?
Uh, could I, I just walked in. I came from another meeting on Polis. Um, that motion may want to perhaps include pending final audit. Because that basically, that end-of-year balance is signed off by final audit, as you know. And the Board took a motion to take, um, uh, the... Are you, you're on item B, correct?
Okay.
Renee?
Hey.
We're still on A, Wendy. Per the letter we received from David Lawson, the chairperson.
Yep, those are our capital projects that we had taken out of the budget, out of our capital portion, in which we put a pause on during our budget season to come back and reevaluate those necessities and withdraw from the Capital Reserve on the same evening at our last meeting. We also discussed the next item that you'll see, which is our end-of-year balance, pending final audit with the Munis. So in efforts to pull the Capital Reserve monies out, we're going to replenish it with the end-of-year balance.
It's just written a little in the obtuse area.
What, the letter?
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize.
Well, you didn't write it, so you're okay.
Greg, you had a question?
Yeah, so you're looking to take $352 from your anticipated surplus and put it into Capital Reserve? Is that what A is? Or to take $352,500 out of Capital Reserve for current expenditures?
No, it's going to be surplus into...
You're wrong on the better. The $352 is already in our Capital Reserve. We're just asking for it to fund capital.
So you're looking to take money from towns that has nothing to do with your surplus?
Yeah, those are two separate moments.
Right.
Those are two separate moments.
Ah, I got you.
All right, so let's do it.
It is coming out of Capital Reserve for expenditures.
They are. It is correct.
So the letter from the chairperson of the Board of Ed is correct.
Correct.
Right, so, so not into, it is from.
And Wendy, these, these items were, it says, removed in January from the budget.
Thank you.
And now that there's a surplus, they're going to...
Well, there's two separate items, basically. They, that, that, it's part of a lot to picture.
No, I'm not talking about B.
Right. But if you take a look at the $352,000 that we're asking to remove or draw out of our Capital Reserve, they are to fund projects through our adopted budget as part of our capital plan in which we reduced that capital plan to put a pause on that, A, for a variety of reasons. And also through a budget process, we would have a budgetary offset and come back to the Town Council and Board of Finance and say, "We've had a chance to examine these. We'd like to withdraw these now out of our Capital Reserve." And the projects, uh, we went through the Board through numerous. And, and they're all listed as part of our capital plan.
Katie, you had a question?
Uh, no, I just had a question that perhaps Wendy, before you send us this, that somebody, just make sure you all have it. And your finance guy is here. Is this all good with you?
Yes, the first question is for A, withdraw.
Okay, so it is from?
Right.
Taking the $352,500 from Capital Reserve. Okay, so the motion is back to the way I read it? From?
From.
And that we would then send this upon our approval to the Board of Finance for their approval?
Correct.
Any other questions? Myest?
Should this be pending?
That's a different motion. I blocked it, but you have two motions.
Just to stick to A. Yeah, just stick to A.
Withdraw.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Item 5B, again, at the request of the Board of Education, I would move that we...
Subject to final audit.
Subject to final audit. Uh, that we send on to the Board of Finance the year-end balance for 2018-2019, that it go to Capital Reserve, amended to request that $50,000 of the year-end balance from 2018-19, subject to final audit, go to Munis account 430-20000-49510-00006, which is for the turf field replacement with the remaining balance going to Capital Reserve.
Second.
Is that crystal clear to everyone?
Yes.
Question?
Just a question more, not, I understand what we're doing here, but this account in particular in the turf fields, um, is this something? Part of it is town-funded and part of it is Board of Education-funded?
The town puts some money in this year as well in the budget?
Okay.
And the Board of Ed is doing the same.
This is our second year. We began this process last year. We made it came when normally we ask for end-of-year balance. Uh, the Board had unanimously decided that we also have a wonderful facility that we all need to pitch in on. So we began contributing, last year was $50,000 as well. This year is $50,000. We don't know if the dollar amount will be the same every year depending on our end-of-year balance.
But the intention is to fund it every year?
Absolutely.
I know the community's looking closely at that. Thank you, ladies.
Doug has a question.
Doug?
I want to thank Wendy and actually, you know, Joe and a lot of people on the Turf Committee. This is something that we wanted to foresee to do. And I'm going to be adamant that it gets done every year, not only on our side of the town, but the BOE side. Because 10 years down the road, all of a sudden, they do need replaced. Everybody's going to be looking in the coffers and it's not going to be there. So this is very, very important. So when it comes time to afford to be replaced, the fund should be majority there and it won't be a burden on the taxpayer. So I commend the BOE for doing this. Uh, I'm a stickler on this. Uh, it wasn't just to do the project and forget about it, but to make sure that in the future, it's funded so we don't have to go back and look for the money to replace it. Thank you to BOE for doing this. And again, I'll be on top of it as well.
Just a quick comment as a track coach. Turf field and track. Want to make sure there's money for the track.
Is all of that, is that all crystal clear to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion? We have a second?
We do.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item six.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Uh, item six, uh, move to approve to, uh, that Mayor Bass enter into a contract between TRI Utility and the Town of New Milford.
So this is basically...
Second?
Second. Thank you. This is basically, uh, we talked about this, uh, earlier on in the year. Uh, TRI Utility costs, uh, basically this was the company that comes in and does an audit, a forensic audit on our utility bills, including phone, electric, gas, and sewage. See if there's, see if there's any potential savings that are there. And then what they do is it's a 50-50 split. I had Attorney DeBella, uh, check the contract to make sure it complied. Attorney DeBella?
Yeah, we've kind of, uh, we've kind of beat this one apart if we can. It's pretty clear now and it's been postponed.
So this is an opportunity for us to get some additional revenue after the, uh, the audit at no cost to the, to the town or to the taxpayer. So I'd like to entertain engaging TRI Utility.
Second. Say it's a 50-50 split.
Sure, so whatever they find as far as savings, uh, the town gets half, they get half. But they don't...
Whatever they find.
Correct.
Pretty standard.
So it's pretty standard in the, in the field. And there's no outlay nor cost to the town. Um, and whatever they find, it's kind of found money for the Town of New Milford.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is it inverse? 50-50 is normal in what these companies do?
It's actually less, it's 15 months instead of 36 months.
Right.
If you understand the standard, if we negotiate.
Yep.
They're going to find us money and we're going to give them half. But they're going to find us money.
Yes. They don't get anything.
Money we didn't ever get.
If they don't find it...
Exactly.
Just one other question, and I think it's for Attorney DeBella. And I don't even know if it's a relevant question. But I see they have offices in Florida and New York, where Connecticut, if there is any litigation, whose state laws apply? Who comes here and comes here?
Good question, Chris.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, item seven is an update from Economic Development Directive.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. I'm very pleased to be here with you tonight. And I'm so glad that you have room on the agenda. Um, it's, it's, this is something I've really looked forward to doing for a while. And I want to share with you a lot of my activity over the last six months. And again, give my thanks and appreciation for the opportunity to work with New Milford and with all of you. Um, I love economic development. I've been doing this for over 20 years now. And I really think I have one of the best jobs that you can have because I get to think about the future of the community on a daily basis and work with businesses who want to be part of that future, whether they're already here or whether they're a company that is thinking about moving here. So those are, those, that's where I'm coming from, uh, as far as that goes. But I've been very busy getting the program of economic development started in the community. And that started with definitely a lot of outreach, a lot of listening, and a lot of learning about the community from the members that are here. So I know I've met many of you in one-on-one meetings or in group meetings, uh, as well as many members of the public. So here is kind of a brief summary of what's been going on. Um, first of all, uh, I was, I did put together a list of things I wanted to accomplish in the first year. And, uh, so you're going to hear many things that seem somewhat elementary, but they have to be done. I have to meet with the top taxpayers in the community and the top employers in the community. Uh, and I need to do that personally, one-on-one. So they have a chance to tell me what's really going on in their business and what they think about the community and what the strengths and the weaknesses are. Uh, so again, that has taken a lot of my time in the first three months. Definitely a high priority, even more in the second three months, uh, in the, the second half of that time, where we've been able to get into some deeper issues. Uh, I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of folks as their roads get rebuilt or as they are already in the process of some kind of expansion, and they run into a roadblock. Uh, so for example, um, one community was, or one business was having trouble getting their permits from the state. Another community was running in, or another business was running into issues with how much sewer they had to hook up for. In those situations, I was able to get involved and help the roadblocks at least be something we could drive over so they could get to the end goal and not become an obstacle that stopped the project cold. Uh, so I had the opportunity to do that. As well as, uh, in May, I started managing the DST meetings, which are the Development Services Team Groups that get together every Tuesday morning. It's all of the land use department heads or their assigned appointees. And we get an opportunity to talk to people who haven't yet filed an application. This is a critically important thing for us to do. It gives us a chance to have a conversation with the business about their plans and offer each department's expertise to make that successful. And that's really what we're brought together to do. It's not meant to be a regulatory headache for anyone. It's just to go over what our rules are and to make the process better and more friendly and, and introduce everyone that they're going to be working with, uh, in the future. So, um, since then, that committee alone has reviewed more than $7 million worth of projects that could potentially happen in the community. So that is very exciting. Um, there are people, and, and I get asked this question all the time. There are people out there who want to invest in Connecticut. And it's not just Connecticut. They... out there who want to invest in Connecticut, and it's not just Connecticut, they love New Milford. This is a beautiful community, has great assets, including a great quality of life, and I know that's very important to each of you. Um, and it's very important to the employees and the department heads that I work with every day to get these projects ready to be reviewed, uh, that we protect and maintain that quality of life. Uh, in addition, uh, we, I have identified many new businesses to put into the pipeline, and when I call it the pipeline, it's just like in sales, there's a pipeline of, of leads that are, um, hot tickets, some are kind of still in the thinking about it phase, and some, we're going to keep working together, but I don't know if they're ever actually going to put their money on the table. Uh, but we still got to work with them because they might pay off something. Uh, so anyway, uh, many of those businesses in the pipeline hear from me on a weekly or monthly basis, depending on their status. Um, I also was able to bring some people from my network, uh, of investors and real estate developers to the community to take a look at the assets that we have, and certainly my retail real estate folks have been very interested in what we have to offer. Uh, in addition, I've met a lot of state and regional economic development leaders. Uh, as you know, I've been on the board of the Northeast Economic Developers Association for five years, and will be president next year, so I knew a number of people in Connecticut already, uh, but I've been able to increase that network. As many of you know, there is a new Commissioner of Economic Development for the State of Connecticut. We've had several meetings and conversations, one right here in New Milford, and, uh, also, he now has a deputy, uh, so we have plans to get together and meet with him as well, so that we are well-connected to Hartford, um, also the Connecticut Economic Resource Center, WestCob, which is another group that is very important. They do a lot of our regional planning, and of course, you know, road transportation, uh, and CEDIS, the Connecticut Economic Development Association. Uh, I also have developed good working relationships with a lot of our municipal economic development contacts. Again, a lot of those were facilitated by employees or elected officials, uh, who knew who I needed to talk to, when I needed to talk to them. Uh, let's see. Uh, we also hosted a meeting of commercial real estate brokers. A lot of the network that economic developers develop is with commercial real estate brokers. Uh, they do a lot of heavy lifting, they know a lot of people, and you have a great group of folks that have come to New Milford once already, and we plan to host them again in the later months of this year. All right, I also had the opportunity to develop a preliminary marketing plan, and that runs through, uh, July, so through the end of the budget, on how to best utilize and do the outreach, uh, for the community. And I did, um, spend some time and effort in the first few months writing, uh, several articles, which if you've been following the Economic Development, uh, group on Facebook, you will have seen some of those articles that were written by me about the community. Uh, I think they came across really well. I've gotten multiple calls from brokers, as well as people interested in the community, and, uh, I think that has been a great investment. Uh, so far, we are five months through the plan, because it did, it does, you do have to do the planning first, um, and, and, and as part of that, I have also attended three different site development, um, meetings or trade shows. So, uh, one was the ICSC New England Trade Show that was held in Boston, and I attended Site Selectors Guild Forum, uh, just in September, which was very helpful, and the Area Development Site Selectors Forum in June. Uh, both of those were opportunities to interact with the top site selectors. So if you think about real estate brokers and their role, site selectors work for the Fortune 100. Uh, one gentleman who I was speaking to says, "I work for the Fortune 10." So these are the kind of companies that he chooses locations for. And to have New Milford introduced to them as a potential location for their clients is a very big deal. So I had the opportunity in, in multiple locations to meet with those folks and talk about why New Milford and Connecticut, because I'm also representing Connecticut, why it's good for your investment dollar today, and why they should be looking at locations here. Uh, in December, there will be an additional site selectors meeting coming up, and we, we also will be pairing that with another article on, um, business, in business facilities that will be talking about, um, opportunities that the community has in, uh, industrial development. We'll be specifically targeting industries we want to attract. So what are those industries we want to attract? Um, we have been collecting a lot of data, uh, from our work with, um, the POCD and with the market study and WXY, and I've been attending all of these meetings. Again, I'm learning more about the community, and this information has shown that there are some really interesting opportunities in, um, bioscience, which I think one of the articles also mentioned, uh, that there are several people on the corporation who are also very interested in bioscience as an opportunity for New Milford, especially on a smaller scale, where we could get things in at the ground floor, companies that are less than 25 people are, are right in the 25-person size. Uh, those are great opportunities to move to the community. They don't have a lot of people that will move with them, they're likely to do their hiring here, and we actually have data that shows that we have the people that they want to hire in our community or close by. So, uh, you know, again, I've been doing a lot of research, a lot of data gathering. Some of the resources for that are Chimura, which is the workforce data piece, uh, Camoyne, who did the market study, uh, uh, the Perry East Street School, that's also more data. The surveys have been made available to me so that I can use what people said, um, in my hunt for what companies belong here. Uh, and then also, uh, Pinnacle, who did the hotel analysis, and WXY, who is working on the bar grant report, which will not be done until March. Uh, and then, of course, the POCD is incorporating a lot of that information into one big effort, planning for the whole community, uh, that should be done in the fourth quarter this year. I think we're targeting, uh, end of October for the POCD. Uh, so again, the first three months was really spent, very much focused on getting to know the community and getting set up to be successful. So next, um, it's using that data. So really, in the last three months, um, we've been able to build, I've been able to build the pipeline of businesses that I'm communicating with about relocating here multiple fold. Um, the, the community has had a great summer as far as construction goes. $15 million, to be exact, since I've arrived, has been pulled in building permits. Uh, a lot of that was in housing and housing expansions, new houses, uh, but $7 million was commercial or industrial development, and that's very important to note. That's a very healthy amount of, uh, investment in the community. That's 44.9% of all the building permits pulled. Um, and so, uh, it, it definitely shows a lot of commercial activity. Of course, what I'm looking to do is to add to that exponentially so that we have more new buildings going up, rather than a lot of expansions or remodelings. Uh, and we do have some of those happening. Implement the plan to achieve jobs and investment goals. My job description has some very specific numbers in place, and I respect that. It is hard to make that happen on a short timeframe, uh, and I'm making every effort to make sure that that happens. Uh, and as I said, you know, I am keeping track on a daily basis, the folks I'm talking to, what the opportunity is, and then following up with them, so that we will capture every bit as much as we can of that opportunity going forward. Uh, let's see. Uh, one of the things that we talked about and that we are going to do is, um, I wanted the opportunity to meet with more existing businesses, and what I have done in the past is have, uh, networking exchanges where business CEOs get together to talk about what challenges they're facing in their industry. Uh, it, we also, we used to do it in manufacturing, but I think here, really what we're targeting are small business owners or, uh, manufacturers, smaller-scale manufacturers. So, uh, one of the things that's coming up in October is, uh, Small Business Week, and we do, we will have a proclamation ready for that time period, but also, the Economic Development Corporation is having their annual meeting, and for the very first time, we're going to be having awards, where we recognize businesses in the community that are great employers, that have done a great economic development project, or that are really partners in economic development, making the town more successful every day. Um, and of course, many businesses fit the mold, so we have a lot to choose from. Um, but what we're really trying to do is raise awareness about economic development, what it means, and how everybody can participate in it, because it's not just about me going to work and, and talking to this, this many people, it's about all of us doing it together, because it doesn't work if just one person does it. Uh, again, I've been continuing to develop relationships with a lot of people in the community who are investors, uh, and again, implementing the marketing plan, which is all about outreach. Um, I'm a very big believer in reaching out. I don't sit in my office waiting for the phone to ring, I don't just write reports, although I have to do that, comes with the job. Uh, and one of the things that, that we have already completed is, um, the Connecticut Economic Development Association, uh, and CERC, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center, uh, put together what they call the Best Practices in Land Use and Economic Development. And it's the first time they've ever tried to get communities to talk about economic development and land use on the same level. So we all looked at our communities through the same lens, and completed an app, I completed the application for New Milford, but I had a lot of help from the department heads. Uh, and what it does is it, it's trying to measure, are we using best practices, uh, or where do we need to make improvements? Well, it turned out, as I was going through this very lengthy application, that we actually were meeting most of the criteria, but we weren't talking about what we were doing on our website, or on our applications, or even, uh, when people spoke to an applicant, they weren't kind of covering all the bases. So what we were able to do was make some changes to the webpages, so that they would be more updated and more reflective of how we actually work with businesses in our community. Uh, one of the other things that became very important that we knew pretty much right away was that we're going to need to get all of our application information on our website, so that it can be viewed by the public without them having to come to Town Hall and request the file and look at it. Many communities across the United States do this, and most recently, we were talking with, um, Danbury and Brookfield, who both already have this system in place. Uh, we can use our View Permit program and make that happen. So we are in the process of doing that now, um, and that is going to be very important for us to save time. As business picks up in the land use departments, they will be able to manage that better and more efficiently with fewer mistakes using that view permit. So that is a program I've used in my past work, and I was very pleased to see it here as well. So that's a very good investment. Um, of course, my goal is that we will be able to shorten approvals and process times by 20%, and I have looked at how we can do that, and the only way we can achieve that is to go online. And it, in our humanness, it will be difficult to achieve a shortage of time without cutting things out, and at this point, as much as I would love to say I know exactly what to cut out, I don't have that yet. That's something we still have to work on. So, um, I think we will achieve improvements in our process just by using the tools we have. Uh, the strategic planning process, which again, I'm responsible for delivering a, an economic development strategic plan to the community. The first phase has already been ongoing, that is the data gathering phase. Uh, I hope to begin the brainstorming sessions, um, in December, uh, I think, and then we can put that plan together in January, February timeframe. Um, I'm confident that the folks on the corporation, the folks on the commission, who've also been tremendously helpful, uh, and many of the business owners, are going to have great feedback as we put that plan together. Um, I will be a presenter at the International Economic Development Conference in, uh, October, which is in Indianapolis, uh, and, let's see, what else? I guess I will, at that point, stop and let you ask any questions, and I do have other data, if I need to refer to it, I brought extra information, so...
Katie?
Thanks Karen. Um, I mean, there's a lot of things, uh, I would like to ask, but I'll go with something you just mentioned about, you know, putting things up on the website, 20% more efficient, et cetera. Um, what's holding that up? Why hasn't it been done?
Uh, I couldn't tell you why it hasn't been done in the past.
No, I'm talking about now. Since you identified it. Yeah. What's holding it up now?
It's, the only thing is to actually have the department heads be prepared and, and tell people to send them in electronically, or to have the, when you go to the website now, you click on, uh, File a Permit?
Yes.
Um, that those screens have to be enabled for each department.
So that means our IT department needs to work with the department heads to get that...
Yes. To get the forms in there.
Okay, who's, who's organizing that and making sure it happens, and how long do you think it'll take?
I've been having the department heads talk about that with the IT.
How long? See, I don't understand the timeframe. I just want to know when it's going to be done.
We were shooting for October, and we're still shooting for October.
Next week? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then one other question. Um, what have you found is the biggest reason you hear from, uh, new businesses or existing businesses in town who maybe want to expand or don't? The reason that they don't want to consider either Connecticut, but mostly New Milford is what I care about. What's the reason that you hear the most?
Uh, well, there are a few different top listings of why. Um, one is available land that is affordable, that has the amenities they want. So it has to have the sewer, the sidewalks, the traffic light, if that, if they're into traffic lights, that, and it has to be, um, it has to be available from the owner. So I have a list of available properties in my office, as I should, and I will, I have talked to almost all of those people. Some of them are not very easy to work with. They want far too much money for their property, uh, and I, I cannot, I mean, it's, it's their decision on what to put the price on it. Um, I can only continue to show other properties.
So the biggest reason is that we don't have affordable properties?
That's one. Uh, other properties don't have...
Is that the top reason, though? That's what I'm curious about.
It's, it's one of the top reasons, that the property that that person wants is too expensive or doesn't have the infrastructure.
Okay.
And even though we do have, we have expanded sewer, um, we don't have it everywhere, obviously, uh, and so sometimes a business is really wanting to be on the sewer system. Uh, and then there are the costs associated with said sewer system.
So we're back to too much money?
Too much money. We're still not as competitive price-wise as I would like us to be, and, um, I have spoken to numerous people about different incentives. Different incentives can, can flatten that playing field, so that the costs are not as burdensome. So if we are looking at, if the business is looking at us in Brookfield, um, you know, I, I would say, the, the things we should be selling the most are our ability to be responsive, and our ability to deliver a timely and appropriate product. And unfortunately, again, I, I think we're still spending too much time in committees before we get to the end product.
So are you the person, are you the person that's moving this?
I am trying very hard to move that.
And do you feel that, um, you're going to have some action in that regard?
I believe I will. I believe I have already seen improvements. I, all the department heads have responded well.
And could you share with us, you're, you mentioned that you had a, a plan, a strategic plan, which I, I know you said that's sort of in the future, but you had made... I know you said that's sort of in the future, but you had made up some lists with the data that you've come up with, and how many businesses you spoke to, and all the places you've gone. Could you share that with the council? Because I hear everything you're saying tonight, it's an awful lot for us to absorb, but we don't have anything to reference. Could you provide that to us at some point?
Well, let me ask Town Attorney a question. If I provide that list to the Town Council, is then that list no longer proprietary?
And that's proprietary to public.
All right. Well, I guess you can have the list.
Thanks. Thank you. That's all for me.
Walter?
Don't need any comment back. All I want to say is, I still see the cover of the magazine, but I can't remember what the magazine's name was, but I loved the two-page article and your comments about New Milford. I don't remember the name of the magazine.
I think that was the first article.
I think it was, well, that would have been Business Facilities.
You gave us the copies, we each got a copy.
Oh, that would be Expansion Solutions.
Yeah.
So that is an international...
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Chris?
Just to piggyback a little bit on what Katie was talking about, I just want to make sure I heard correctly. One of the biggest issues is the asking price for the property, and does that mean that the market value for New Milford is too high, or the owner is asking too much above the market value, in your opinion?
In some of the situations I have run into, the asking price is for a property that would have all of the infrastructure in place. So they're not, it's not priced properly, it's not priced realistically.
And your seven million dollar pipeline?
Yes.
What was that when you, what was the value of the pipeline when you came?
Well, there was footnotes at that point, and I actually did calculate, in the first three months before I arrived, there was, well, there was no commercial development in the first three months, and then, I got it right here. Okay, so in the first three months, there were, oh, it was $167,800, or 4.72% of permits pulled for January, February, and March. In April through August, there have been $6,949.342 in commercial and industrial, does not include municipal projects. Obviously, municipal projects happen at the time when the budget gets funded, so they're always going to be at that point in time. That equals a total of 52.7% of all building permit activity has been commercial or industrial. Obviously, I didn't participate in every project. But I will have a role to play, again, when projects are coming in, when projects are stuck at something, or, you know, again, I will be bringing projects forward that are new.
That sort of growth in commercial, is, are we seeing a similar growth rate to the towns around us, including on the New York side?
I don't have their building permit information, I don't have access to that. I will tell you that just basing from my driving around to know the other communities a little bit, I'm seeing a lot of commercial and industrial development in both Danbury and Brookfield, which are really the only ones I've personally gone to check out.
And just a few other questions, I won't...
Sure.
In that typical, and I would call it a sales cycle in a normal pipeline, but what would be the, and I know there's going to be a big range, but if you average it, what's the time to close something in the pipeline? And what sort of closure percentage wins do you expect?
Well, as you can imagine, a closure percentage is going to be a low number, because it does take time, and some projects will never happen, some will never happen in your community. I like to close about 10% of my projects. That is a very healthy, I think, number. That means we're not losing anything to anyone else's community, we're only losing things that maybe weren't a good fit for us, or they were spreading their net too wide when they initially contacted us. The length of time, again, can vary. I worked on an aerospace project that was a big project, it took three years for that project to happen. Most projects will take between six months and a year, and then, that's just the deciding phase.
Yep.
And then you've got several months to go through an approval process, if they need state permits, you can add a few months to that. Then they have to build it, which takes a year, if you're building a new building, it can take up to a year, depending on what kind of building. So, you know, start to finish...
Yeah, we're just talking about mostly just to close it.
By the time the tax assessor is starting to look at real numbers, you're probably talking at least a couple to three years.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thanks, Karen, for your service. I've met with you, and you're just terrific to work with. What is, your job is really a salesperson.
Very much.
Come to New Milford, open up your business public, work late, you know, the whole thing that we've always talked about. How do you compete with Brookfield and Danbury, let's say, and say, what do you say about New Milford compared to the other towns? What do we have to offer that they don't?
Well, and I think I referred a little bit to this in the earlier part of the discussion, is that quality of life, that the community has really taken so much time to protect the amount of open space. The policies are in place that are to protect that open space. And again, I mention that because there's always a flip side to that. That means we have more open space to work with, so there's the my side of that, is that means we have some opportunities to develop some of that space that's currently not developed, and that this community really wants to see growth and development, because that's what I have seen since I've been here. Now, that is something that we need to express better, I feel, that that desire for growth hasn't reached the mainstream yet. So in Brookfield, you get a sense of that they're willing to look at growth, because you can see the new construction throughout their community. In New Milford, it's not visible, we have to talk about it. And so that's why I do the outreach that I do, is to let people know that we do want them to come here, that this is an opportunity, and it's a good one, and that the people here are special, and that they are well-educated, and that they can give new businesses that opportunity to grow right here. So, sure.
Thank you.
Doug?
Thank you, Karen, thanks for coming today. A couple of questions on the sewer hookups. I know that some prior businesses are here, and then some newer businesses, they struggle with the cost of hooking up.
Yes.
So my question to you is, have you come across any businesses that are in town that are reluctant to do it because of the hookup? And if, is there any kind of a payment plan, or something to stretch it out, that would make it less fiscal for them to come up with the money right away, and do like a payment plan over 10 or 15 years? I know some can be up to $17,000, $20,000 to hook up, and it's a big number.
The bigger the business, the bigger the number.
Right. And then there's some businesses in town that would like to expand, but they have to connect, and they're reluctant to do it because of the upfront cost. Have you come across any, and is there any kind of payment plan, or can we come up with something that would make them more incentive to want to do that, as opposed to not?
Yes, that, well, when I talk about leveling the playing field, that's one of the costs that I'm definitely talking about. And I have talked with the mayor and the members of the corporation, as well as the commission, about what we should be doing to proactively tackle this obstacle. Because we do have businesses in our community that would expand, but for that, because once they, the way that the ordinance is, is once you expand, once you want to expand your business, you're required to hook up.
Right.
And that adds a lot of cost. If, again, under those circumstances, it's a big cost for someone who's already going to be adding to their building, maybe adding people, maybe adding equipment. So it is something that we have a draft of a possible incentive that would be available to businesses who were going to build onto their building, again, generate some additional tax revenue, property tax revenue specifically, that would potentially be attractive to get people to do construction. Of course, then, the concern is, what about the businesses that are already here? What can we do for them? Because at the end of the day, we want all of our businesses that are along the sewer line to be hooked up to it. That's the way that the system should be working. So what are the incentives that we can look at to that? And for that, I don't have a draft, but I know it's important, and I want to keep working on that until we can solve both problems.
Okay.
What's your, just off topic, you had, what's your timeline for having, I'll just take that last thing, you just mentioned incentives, it's been brought up many times over the years, a way to not upset the people who have been and still are connected and entice new people, as Doug just brought up, a payment plan, or, you know, we, mayors talked about it several times. So what's your timeframe right now to get that item done? Because you said, right in the beginning, that our sewer hookups, and then the things that are infrastructure and the cost of things, is like a major thing. So what is your estimation for when this might be drafted?
Well, the first version is drafted.
And when would it be shown?
And I can give it to you as soon as the mayor says, let's have it at the...
So right now, we're in talks with the WPCA, is there their own authority?
That's what I was hoping, we were talking to them, yeah.
So it's working collaboratively with them, also with finance, to make sure whatever that we do do is both impactful for bringing in new business, but also doesn't hurt our ability to pay for that WPCA bond.
Are any of the existing business owners involved in any of your discussions about what would be a fiscally acceptable solution? Because I'm sure they too would like to see new businesses move in, that would help everybody, of course, financially. Do you include some of our, you know, in-place businesses to see what their thoughts are?
I always ask their opinions, but in the case of the sewer tax incentive, with its sewer incentive, it has been the corporation who has really been giving the most...
Okay, so you haven't, I mean, because, you know, a lot of times people, you may assume that they would be upset if someone new were to get something that they didn't have. On the other hand, if that new business were to bring other things to town, which would enhance things for them. I just think, you know, it's just my suggestion, that it would be nice, I think, to include in some brainstorming, some existing, one or two businesses, maybe a small one, maybe a large one, because otherwise, you're speculating on how they would react to that. And a homeowner, how they would react to that. So I, you know, it's just good business practice to include those you are talking about, you know, it's just data.
Completely agree.
Thanks. So I'd like, when you get around to that, I wonder if you could tell us when you plan to have that ready, just as a first step, because it seems that sewer is involved in many of the roadblocks.
So yes, and as I said, the draft for the new businesses has already been completed. If we wanted to get that going in October, I could certainly draft a expansion-type policy.
But you haven't, you don't have a feel for what existing businesses would say about that? I mean, they've never seen it.
I do not at this time.
So rather than drafting it and putting it out that way, and having somebody go through the roof, who's a good business, that's been in town for a long time, you know, I'm just thinking, why upset them needlessly? That's all you might think about.
I would certainly, I know the businesses that, who feel they're being held up from expanding now, and I can certainly reach out to them, once again, and talk to them about some alternatives.
And those that are happy. I mean, you know, we do have people who are satisfied with the services they get and what they pay for, and their businesses are moving along. So I just, I think sometimes we always think about the noisy wheel, the wheel that's turning is also important to talk to.
Quite well made.
Anybody have anything else? Lisa?
Thank you, Karen. It's, listening to you describe your first six months, it sounds very hectic, and that there are so many layers that need to be addressed. Thank you. Thank you for sticking to it and putting some framework, and also bringing in your existing contacts and your methodology, because I think we sometimes get lost in a lot of opinions, because we don't have the data, and so that you can bring that to us is very helpful.
Anybody else? Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
Next? Greg.
All right. Hold up. Oh, there it is. That is, green spaces is still withdrawn, so we'll get back to you on that when they're ready. Sorry.
Fine, it's Greg.
Good evening, all. I want to give an update and a recap on our fiscal year ending 2019, adjusting for carried-in force, assignment of fund balance, and now it's confirmed that the Board of Ed will transfer all of their surplus to capital reserve. The surplus for the town after allowances is unaudited $339,486. As you may recall, this was within the range that I reported back in June of between $250,000 and $500,000. This amount can either fall to the bottom line, or be assigned for transfer to the town's capital reserve fund, which I recommend, by the way, as the town currently has nothing in that font. Any questions about 2019? Moving on to 2020, revenues. Revenues as of August 30th were at $46,330,409, which is 44.9% of budget. On a straight-line basis, one would expect 17.3% of revenues to be collected at this point. Tax collections are at $38,414,743, and this represents 53.8% of budget, with current taxes at 54.9% of budget. New this year is the incorporation of recycling revenues into the general fund budget that are currently at 20.9% of budget. Land use revenues are at 34.7% of budget. Building inspector revenues are at 51.8% of budget, of which $100,000 is attributed to a Canterbury school project, still good news nonetheless. Parks revenue is at 19.2% of budget, while not yet an issue with interest rates easing interest income bearers watching. On the expenditure side, overall expenditures are at 25.9% of budget, or $10,415,351, with Without encumbrances, expenditures are at $8,508,653, or 21.1% of revised budget. On a straight-line basis, again, one would expect 17.3% of budget expended for this period. Debt, pension, and general insurance payments are front-loaded, therefore skewing the numbers upward slightly. There are, however, some areas of concern, namely police and dispatchers overtime. Police overtime is at 34.7% of budget, and dispatchers is at 42.1% of budget, respectively. At this point, at this rate, it is not a question of if dispatcher overtime could go over budget, but a question of when. At this rate, I expect this line to exceed budget by December. In an effort to mitigate this issue, there were two retirements, of which the Personnel Director and the Chief have, are in the process of filling. Additionally, a part-time position has been initiated to try and curtail the situation, and we will be monitoring the situation closely.
So I'd like to interact with that as well. So I get weekly runs on these numbers, and this is something that we've been looking at and monitoring. I've been talking with the chief, and with the chief came on, this was something that's been ingrained in our organization. It's not just this year. And I'll give you an example. organization. It's not just this year. And I'll give you an example. So we go back to fiscal year '17, prior to me being here, dispatcher overtime was $144,476.41. Last year, it was $103,788.71. So we are aware of the sustainability, working with the police department, we're working on things to mitigate that, is adding more staff. Another thing that drove this number up last year was that we had one dispatcher that went out on medical, and as soon as he went out, due to the contractual obligations that we have, it was automatic overtime. So the chief, working with the union and the new union president, has allowed us now to put in a per diem dispatcher, which now is going to help us drive down these costs. So we've seen this problem, and we're working on the solution to mitigate that problem. So I just wanted the council to be aware.
So will the balance of the retirements taking down salaries and then the increase in overtime work itself out by the end of the fiscal year?
So, Chief, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that? That's something that's kind of a work in progress right now?
Yes, it is a work in progress. We have a short-term plan, which we're dealing with right now. We're obviously working with the union with the per diem issue. We want to hire a part-timer to help us stem the tide of overtime. We need to bring our staff up to full staff. We have one new hire in training, one being hired this week. It takes at a minimum eight, eight to 10 weeks to train a dispatcher properly. So we're working on that short-term plan. Long-term plan into the next fiscal year and beyond, we are considering options. Part of those options are potentially combining with other towns to do dispatching, to utilize state funding that's available. And like I said, a short-term plan for now, but also considering long-term options for the next fiscal year.
And as we were going through that too, I'm sorry, we did have two people that we'd already brought on. One had left, and then one retired. So as we were bringing two on, two came off, so now we're hiring two again.
Okay, so there wasn't really a lap between the retirement and new hires to balance out the overtime issue?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Just a, I'm sorry, just a question for the chief. If I heard you right, Greg, 34 percent of budget for police?
Police overtime.
And is that because it's summertime and we're doing a whole bunch of stuff?
Yes, it also has to do with staffing. We currently have two officers in the academy. Once they graduate from the academy and are able to, you know, be included in our full staff, we'll see those overtime hours come down. Obviously, we've also had some very major cases we've dealt with over the last few months, to include overdose cases, to include a shooting, to include a stabbing, to include very serious crimes, to include crimes that we're investigating from the past. So we're working on some very, very big cases also, and that had an impact on our overtime budget.
Thank you. I have some more questions while you're standing. Can I just ask, Chief, what about that rotational shift that you implemented? Is that helping?
Yes, that's helping tremendously. Those types of hours are reduced.
Good, thanks.
Just a question on the dispatcher overtime. It sounds like it's something we've had an issue with for a while.
Absolutely.
What we're talking about tonight is the performance against the budget. So I guess my question is, are you overly optimistic in our budget, if the issue's been, if it predates this year?
Right. So I came in, in late November, right in the midst of the beginning of budget season, so I didn't have an opportunity to truly assess it, but now I've had that opportunity. So I hope to show you, and it will reflect in the next, in the budget year, more realistic.
Thank you. Any other, got anything else, Greg? Any other questions?
Other than minimum wage legislation was signed into law by Governor Lamont, and as of October 1st, minimum wage allowance will be $11 instead of $10.10 an hour. And I apprise all the department heads, number one, to adjust their hiring accordingly, because this budget year is already set. But keep that in mind for, you know, future budget negotiations.
And we spoke with the department heads that have a lot of part-timers, especially seasonal. They're aware, and they're making their adjustments.
Right.
To make sure that we're within budget. So we were letting them know back in the summer to make sure that they're aligned with their budget and 90 cents.
Just a quick question. You talked about a shortage in overtime at the police and dispatcher, and obviously you said there's two officers, Chief, that are going to become out of the academy and back in, and then you're hiring dispatcher eight to 10 weeks. At what point do you see, Greg and Chief, that this start, the percentages start to go down? December? January? When it starts to go back instead of going up with the overtime?
From my perspective, I would see it coming down in February, March. That's when these two officers will be ready to be included as staff. So we'll have those two extra persons in place in February, March. As far as the dispatcher situation, like I said, over the next six, eight weeks, I can see an improvement.
So when dispatcher comes on, you'll see the overtime act shrink, right?
Yes.
Opposed to right now?
That, and in addition to the per diem option and the part-time option.
Thank you.
And lastly, Greg, is it your opinion as the finance director, you just told us that we would have a surplus? So your recommendation, we put it in the capital reserve?
I would, because we currently have nothing there. We need to start building that back up.
And? What should be added?
That's an arbitrary question. I don't know.
Is it not a standard?
Well, a million dollars would be nice, but, you know.
And don't forget, and Chris, what's been the history, is any surplus has really fallen to the unassigned, where we have a very robust, was it 18 percent? 17 percent?
Right. But one thing you have to understand, as our budget grows, the denominator grows with the numerator staying the same.
Absolutely.
So the percentage over time will go down if we don't.
Correct.
Add back to that.
So would, is it okay, the purview with town attorney, if someone was to make a motion to suspend the rules, to add a motion to send this, if approved by the town council or the board of finance, to put this into the capital reserve, per the audit?
Per the audit.
And what are the recommendations of the second?
Yep, recommendation for finance.
Second.
So that's, that's to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And could I entertain a motion to?
So moved. I just want to read, make sure we have the correct amount, Greg?
That's unaudited. Yes, that's unaudited. There will be audit adjustments.
Of course.
Per the audit.
$382,743.67, is that the number?
No, it is, what are we?
It was when you walked in. $339,486, no cents? Okay.
Sometimes we don't have any sense.
I know that.
I tried to round.
Subject to audit.
Subject to audit.
Subject to audit. Okay. So moved.
And it's subject to audit? We have a second. Any discussion that this will be going to our capital reserve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Walter?
Got one more? Number nine. Just real quick, we had our special town meeting prior to this meeting on the sale of property, which was 18? Dogwood, for $2,000, how much was it? $2,346. It was unanimously approved at the town meeting. I just wanted to notify the council and the public at large. Walter?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.